Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular town council meeting for Tuesday, June 14th, 2016. The opening prayer will be given by Reverend Deanne Dodd of St. Paul's Episcopal Church. Please rise.
The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Thank you Creator Lord for this beautiful day, for this string of gorgeous days. Open our eyes to see Your goodness and creativity all around us. And likewise may these our public servants be inspired to new ideas and integrity as they seek to serve You and this our community. And dear Lord, may they inspire us in turn to do the same. In Your love and goodness we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We'll have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone? Chertel?
Present.
Sullivan? Testa?
Here.
Zandry? Chairman Servoni?
Here. I have been advised by Councilor Sullivan and Councilor Zandry that they have work obligations that challenge their availability tonight. I do expect Councilor Sullivan soon. I'm not sure that Councilor Zandry is going to make it. Also, Councilor Marone had a conflict and he will be late to this evening's meeting. Onto item three.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through U.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer period. Mr. Kennedy.
On Kennedy Bull Avenue. I guess I'm going to address this to you Chairman Servoni. I finally got the financials after four months of asking. And when I went digging through, I found an item which I found very interesting. And that is called the capital and non-reoccurring. And when I looked at the amounts that are sitting in there, I was a little surprised. There's an amount called prior, which I don't know what it stands for. Is it prior to 2010? Because the first amount that is reported is in 2010. Of a million dollars that's sitting in that account. And then from 2010 through the end of 2015, there's another 3.756 million dollars sitting in the account. And these seem to be all road projects and things of that nature. And if I look at 2010, 2011, 2012, which is three, four, five, six years ago, there's a, you know, close to a million and a half dollars sitting there. And my question is, is why do we have money sitting in accounts for roadwork which should have been done years ago and is still sitting there? Can somebody explain that to me?
Well, my perception is that the work hasn't been done yet and that the money is reserved for the work when public works gets to it or when a road contractor gets to it. But I am happy to explore further the answer to your question and provide you an answer when I get it.
Five years and you're still waiting on a contractor? I, one of the items here is Hall Avenue rebuild or whatever. There's a million dollars sitting there since 2012. Why do we carry that that long?
That might be the streetscape improvement.
The streetscape, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a little different than the road improvement.
Oh, okay. Why do we have money sitting there for three, four, or five years?
Thank you. Mayor.
That's a project that requires funding from the state as well as the town. I believe that's probably, and you know, I can't, without Jim in discussion with the department, I can't be absolutely sure of all of this. But that project is a combination of trail as well as Hall Avenue streetscape. And those two components are funded at this point. We're out with bids to hire a, an architect to provide the design for the trail component as well as the streetscape. But we need to maintain the funding. At one point, the state hadn't provided the funding. And we now have the funding from the state. So there are a variety of factors involved. But that is that project.
There, there, as I said, the list is five pages. And I think we need to look at those items and any funds that are not going to be used because a lot of the projects are marked as complete with 50,000, 30,000, 40,000 sitting in them. Why don't we release those funds and bring it back? And, you know, again, eliminate a tax increase like we did this year where we again had to increase taxes. There's money sitting there which I'm sure is never going to be used. Let's pull it out of there and put it back into the coffers. And I would appreciate a follow-through on that one. Thank you.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. On last week's paper, the Record Journal, there was two articles about some grants that were given to Berlin and Meriden. I was just wondering through the chair to the mayor if Wallingford even applied for these grants.
I don't know what grants you're referring to.
All right. I have it right here. Can't read it, but it's very small. Berlin was awarded $500,000 for the facade and landscape program by the state of Connecticut. This is to improve their downtown. It's going to put lighting in, period lighting, sidewalks and those types of things, you know, consider it goes on from there. Meriden received $870,000. This is to part of their, quote, according to Governor Malloy, transit-oriented and responsible growth area. Again, they are going for sidewalks, traffic signals, those types of things. Did we, did the town of Wallingford apply for any of this? We qualified?
Yes, we did apply and we were not one of the recipients. We applied for improvements along, I believe it was North Cherry in the vicinity of the planned railroad station as well as along Route 5. Again, in that vicinity of, of the new railroad station, probably from the, the intersection of Hall, Quinnipiac, Center Street, and Route 5, then to the north to where the railroad station would be. And we did not, we were not successful in receiving the funds.
I see that Mr. Rose here. I didn't realize he was here. Would've asked him. Do we know what we asked for? How much money we asked for?
Mr. Rowe would probably know. Do you know, Dunn, offhand? I don't think it was 10 million dollars.
No, no, no. We, you couldn't have asked for that amount? It's pro, it's on a size basis? Meriden got one of the bigger.
Is this one on?
Yes.
Oh, it's on. We requested $2 million, which was the maximum amount that you were eligible to apply for. But I would guess you knew that.
Well, no, but I'm just curious. Okay, so you have the letter stating that we didn't receive it and so forth?
We have not gotten any correspondence saying we didn't get it. But certainly, you know, the governor issued his press release with the information as to who was, who received those awards.
And so this was, we were all shovel-ready for this?
No, the, we were not. Okay? Which is what was one of the criteria that in follow-up conversations with folks at OPM, they identified, that the lead time to put the project together, all right, and go through what would need to be a very participatory process, you know, because there's a lot of neighbors in that area as well as utilities, would have been a fairly time-consuming undertaking. And they were looking for projects that were ready to go. I sort of compare it to, you know, they were looking for projects that were on the 10-yard line, ready to go into the end zone. So Meriden, they've already invested 20-some million dollars in their deal project. They thought that would help them get, you know, down the road faster.
And I know Berlin has been in the process.
However, the list clearly shows that much of the money was authorized to be spending on hiring of, of expertise in developing specs. So a lot of those projects that were approved weren't ready to, to go either.
They, they did fund some planning, basically planning grants and design grants. But they just felt that, you know, they had, they had reached the, the number of planning grants that they were comfortable with in the pool of applications. And they really wanted, you know, projects that would come to fruition, you know, in short order.
And this is no disrespect to Mr. Rowe. This is why I think during budget season, it would behoove the town to have a full-time grant writer, somebody who can, because Mr. Rowe's hands are just full of, he, you do so many jobs around town. And I, I know you're going to say that you can, but I mean, it really behooves the town that if we hired somebody as a grant writer to be able to follow up on all these grants that are out there, get them to the specs that we really need them for, the money that the person could potentially bring in would far outweigh their salary. And I know Mr. Rowe, you, I know you feel.
Well, in this particular case, Bob, I don't think that would have helped at all. And I don't mean to be argumentative with you.
Oh, I'm not trying to be.
But, you know, this particular case, it would not have mattered because again, the plans and specifications, you know, have, are yet to be developed. So, you know, I don't think it would have mattered.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Mr. Gross, seeing no one else.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Just curious on what's happening with the solar development down on the old dump?
On the landfill?
Yeah, landfill dump.
Okay. Mayor, do you have any idea where that project is?
I have no new information.
Is the town potentially taking an active interest in partnering up with the developer in this particular project? Is, say, a minority stakeholder in the project? Because as you know, sol, solar is, I mean, everywhere you go, you see these big solar farms going up. And the electric division does get involved in other projects all over the state. So why shouldn't they do something in our backyard?
We will have to enter, and we have, I believe the council approved an initial contract or commitment to work with them. If you mean by partnering up that we would enter into lease and contractual obligations between the party, yes. If you mean by partnering up, we share in any obligations or profits, no, we don't do that. Because there's no reason for the town to, to expose itself to losses when we're in, we would be entitled to lease payments and tax payments regardless of whether it was a success or not. So, no, we, we don't enter into a partnership where we are sharing the liabilities of an owner, whether it's successful or not. We didn't, haven't done that with the, the Pennsylvania Power and Light. That project, we just typically do not take that route when there's no reason for the public to have that exposure for loss.
You do realize, we do do that with CMAC. We do partner with programs and invest in projects with CMAC.
We're.
I understand we're not.
The relationship with CMAC is entirely different and it's ending at this point. So.
Projects aren't.
But typically, we do, we do not take on projects where we share ownership obligations with an outside party. We receive lease payments as owners of the real estate. We receive tax payments. But we don't typically receive profit and loss issues where, where there's payments through the electric grid for participating in a project of one kind or another. That's, that's pursuant to the regulations that ISO New England operates under. And that can be successful and it may not be successful. But, but to be an owner and share in profit and loss, I don't think we want to be there.
So the council, if you own the land, you still can lease the land. Even if you're an owner of the land, you can, they would pay a percentage of the lease. I would just hope the council would look at this. This is forward-thinking. It is a green project. There is potential to make money. Company's not going to come to Wallingford under the auspices of losing money. I would hope that the council would look at it. We all understand the mayor has an aversion to risk. But without any risk, this could be very beneficial to the town of Wallingford. They're coming in here to make money. We should be partaking. It's making some of those profits also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Rice, 96 Pearson Drive, Wallingford. The panels at the landfill, those aren't Wallingford's property, aren't they?
The solar panels?
Yes.
I don't know if that's in Wallingford or not. Right now, I'm not going to say where, where the, what side of the boundary they lie on. It's, it's owned, it's property owned by the, the city of Meriden, whether it's in Wallingford or not.
It's in Wallingford. My question, and I knew that, that's, I just wanted to see your reaction. The question that I have is, you know, I know it came before planning zoning board of appeals and we had rejected and then we allowed it. But I still don't understand, that's equipment. Generally, we tax equipment. Why can't we tax Meriden? They're going to be making money on this. And, and it's a lease to Meriden through a, another company. So I don't understand the rationale. How come we can't tax them?
Well, number one, I don't know, you know for a fact we aren't taxing that?
No, I don't.
Okay, so that's, that's one.
But I've been told that they are, they can't be taxed because they're a municipality.
It's, that's not entirely true.
I remember a case years ago when Vinnie McManus handled it, there was something to deal with property down there and it, I can't, maybe if I look it up, I can, in the, in the law office, I can find out what happened. But I think that's worth looking into because it is equipment. It's put in by a, a private contractor. And I don't see any reason why we can't get some tax money out of that.
It may be taxable now, but in general, just because a municipality owns something doesn't mean it is not taxable. It depends upon the use of it. If it's for general governmental, general public purposes, then it's not taxable. If it is for some, a purpose other than for the general public, then it can be taxable. But here again, without, there may also be tax-exempt status for some environmental projects.
See, I don't know this. That's why I'm bringing it up. And, and you know, I think.
That's something the assessor's office has to do.
I think it's something, you know, to look into.
Very good.
Any other questions, comments from the public? There being none, I close the public question and answer period and move on to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding the Wallingford Board of Education
I don't know if, I wasn't sure if this was on or not. Good evening. I wanted to share with you a proposed contract for the Information Technology Employees of the Board of Education.
Sure, if you could just remind us who you are for the record.
Sure. Cindy Lavalette, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel of Wallingford Public Schools.
Thank you.
Roxanne McKay, Board Chair.
Sal Menzo, Superintendent.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
All right. The IT union is, is a union of only seven employees total. And when we negotiated this contract, we had a few goals in mind. One of them was to keep the contract of a short enough duration so that we are still being aware of the excise tax. Another goal was to try to make sure that we were fiscally responsible in keeping the general wage increase at, at or below 2% while simultaneously trying to make our wages competitive for the IT field so that we can attract and retain people with a technology background sufficient to meet the needs of a district. As always, we are trying to keep insurance costs down and we're ever-present, ever-aware of the fact that we need to reduce the insurance waivers in all of our contracts. So with those things, with those goals in mind, we have a two-year contract going forward. But there was a one-year wage re-opener, which was retroactive into the past year that we are just ending. In the retroactive year, it's a 2% general wage increase. In the 16, 17 years, the first year going forward, there is a 2% general wage increase. However, that 2% does not apply to the following employees. One would be the network administrator and that employee is being moved from an hourly employee to a salaried employee. And the salary that he will be raised to would make his salary consistent actually slightly lower than what he earned with overtime in the 2014, '15 school year. There's also an application tech person who is separated from the other employees and will be getting a $2.50 per hour wage increase because of her very special areas of knowledge, particularly with a program that is used district-wide called Power School. And it's just very, very specialized training that she has to keep up with annually. And it's hard to get people who have that. Finally, there is one other technician that in order to make his wage competitive with people who are doing work of his nature, there's a $1,500 wage adjustment for him. In the 17, '18 year, the GWI is an increase of 2%. And overall, the total cost of this contract for three years is an estimated $33,300, or $350. Regarding the insurance waiver, we did make gains in reducing it each of the, of the years. So in the current year, it's reduced from 30 to 25%. In the upcoming school year, the 16, '17 year, it's 25 to 20%. And in the last year of this contract, it goes down to 10%. The waiver was sunset for new hires in our previous contract, so that's already happened. For our insurance, to try to maintain costs or to keep them at a reasonable spot, we did increase our deductibles for office visit, certain care, ER, outpatient, inpatient. We also were able to increase our premium cost share by 1.5% for each of the years of the contract going forward. So not in the retro year, but in the 16, '17 and in the 17, '18 year, so 1.5 per year for each of those two years. We were able to introduce the HSA as an option. This is not a buy-up, which is something that I've introduced in other contracts, but it's strictly an option introducing the HSA into language that might help us move forward in that direction in future negotiation.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Questions or comments from the public? Now, I understand that this contract takes effect 30 days from its delivery to the council if we take no action tonight. However, you'd like to move some money around in advance of the next fiscal year, am I correct?
I would like to be able to do that because this is, there is one-year wage re-opener that is retro and this current fiscal year will be ending. So if we were able to take action tonight, it would expedite so that I could make those retro payments more logistically feasible in this current fiscal year.
Okay. Counselor Laterno?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this contract as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. At this time, I am going to skip ahead to item eight on the agenda, which is the public hearing regarding the amendment to Chapter 59, Alarms of the Code of the Town of Wallingford. Chief Wright is here before us and it is my understanding that as soon as we are done with him, he's going to head to the Cheshire Town Council meeting to follow up on some business that was before this town council at our last meeting.
That's correct. The shared services agreements that this body considered about a month ago is to be considered this evening in Cheshire.
Okay. Chief, before we open up the public comment on this, could you give us a summary of the changes that we are proposing to adopt to the ordinance?
Absolutely. The changes in the ordinance, which were last adopted in 1984, are essentially to help us to reduce the amount of false alarms that are occurring in town in reducing the amount of free or unbillable alarms from six to three while also increasing the fine thereafter to $50. We are convinced that this will help to reduce what has now become over 11% of our call volume, which will certainly free up resources for more important things.
Thank you, Chief. With that, I will open the public hearing on this proposed change to the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Going once, going twice, going three times. There being no comments from the public, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a motion on the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as, the modified ordinance as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Questions, comments from the council? There being none, as this is an ordinance, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Chief, please drive safely.
Thank you. Thank you for consideration and moving me up on the agenda.
Yep. Mr. Mira, thank you for your patience. We will go back to item seven, which is to consider an ordinance, an amendment to Chapter Eight, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Article Three, Economic Development Commission of the Code of the Town of Wallingford. This was scheduled for a public hearing at 6:45, so we are not too early. Gentlemen, remind us who you are for the record and then tell us a little bit about the change which you've proposed to the ordinance committee.
Good evening. I'm Joe Mira, Chairman of the Economic Development Commission.
And I'm Don Rowe, Economic Development Staff Person. You want to talk?
Yeah. We are looking to expand the commission with three alternates for several reasons. One, to help with the workload. Another one is to have the opportunity to pass on the experiences of the current commissioners to future generations that will be coming on board. And there was a third one.
The, also, I think we're, we're looking to make sure this will provide us with qualms for all our meetings.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Going once, twice, three times. There being no questions or comments from the public, I bring it back to the council for motions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the modified ordinance as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments from the council? Any discussion or comments from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We thank you.
Thank you. Item nine is to conduct a public hearing at 7:15. However, it is too early to conduct the public hearing at the time as advertised. Therefore, I'd like to skip ahead to item 10, which is regarding the sale of 188 North Cherry Street. Counselor Fishbein, did you want to advise us of something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As has been my past practice with regard to this matter, in the essence of erring on the side of caution, I recuse myself from this matter.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion on the?
Mr. Chairman, a move. We approve the agreement for the sale of 188 North Cherry Street.
Second. Moved and seconded. Attorney Farrell, what have you for us?
Attorney Kovacs is also a client of mine, so I didn't negotiate this. Corporation Council Small did. My understanding is all the parties agree, and planning and zoning has approved this as well.
Any questions or comments from the council regarding this? Any questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Certainly. Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Still too early to do item nine. My understanding is that the mayor does have some business for the council under item 11, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
All those in favor going, well, the motion needs to state why we're going into executive session. So is the motion to go into executive session pursuant to Section 1, 260 of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and releasing of property?
Yes.
All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There being none. We're not going to clear the chambers. We'll go back into the council office, so you all can stay in this room. Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The council is in regular session. All right, and it is after 7:15 PM, so the next item on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing to consider and act on repealing Chapter 127 of the Historic Properties of the Code of Town of Wallingford. With that, the issue at hand for those who haven't been following this story closely is whether or not the council will repeal the ordinance creating the Historic Properties Commission. Is there any comment from the public? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Question on procedure on this. The public needs to speak first, then it goes back to the council. Council speaks, or if they have discussion on it, then does the public get to talk about what, or ask questions on what the council spoke about at that particular time, or is it all public speaking now?
Mr. Gross, typically, when we are conducting a public hearing with respect to the ordinance, to an ordinance, the council doesn't go back to the public after it debates the issue after hearing the public comment.
So you said it does not go back to the public?
Typically not, no.
Will they entertain that tonight if there's any?
Well, in the abundance of caution, I just may.
Okay, so, but there's no guarantee at this point. I'm just curious because there seems to be, for this particular item that was in an ordinance meeting a few weeks ago, there seems to be some, the first two ordinances, you know, there was no public comment or questions. Here you have an auditorium of probably 20-plus people, which is a sizable crowd for council meeting, so this has some interest in it. So I would just hope that the council would entertain the public speaking at both ends of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening, council members. My name is Richard Straub. I live at 1207 Sperry Road, Cheshire. I just have a few quick comments about a consensus of the Wallingford Historic Preservation Trust on the issue. We were established about 25 years ago. The Properties Commission was established a decade or so later with the support of the Historic Properties, I'm sorry, with the support of the Preservation Trust. The reason it was supported was it was seen as a vehicle for potential technical and financial assistance from the state, so it would be a helpful adjunct to our work to preserve historic properties. Unfortunately, to my knowledge, there's been no attempt to gain either financial or technical assistance by the Properties Commission over all the years that it has been in existence. We, in February, and as Secretary of the Organization, I authored a letter to the council requesting to improve working relationship between the two committees, our committee and the trust, their committee and the trust, that we have membership on the Historic Properties Commission. And that's as far as I'm going. That's the status that I see before us tonight.
Thank you.
Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. I'd like to also repeat Mr. Gross's ask to the council that we be able to speak. I have certain questions that I would assume that the commission will be up at the table. And one of the main questions that's going to be answered, or that was being asked at the ordinance committee, was their viability as to their relevance. And I do believe I have some questions that I'd like to ask the commissions that might establish how they are relevant to the public in this town. So I'd like that opportunity while they're up there to talk to them.
Mr. Morganstein, thank you. Ms. Brishers?
Do have a couple of statements on behalf of the commission itself. In the little packet that I gave you today clarified a few things that were, showed up at the ordinance committee, including the architectural plans for the Royce House. We had, the trust had said that they were done with work, and that at least helped show where we were coming from in previous comments to you, that we don't think that they're done, and what else, you know, that they had plans, even though it was in the future. And there had been a question about an outdoor bathroom, so that's why I sent them to you, so you can see what we were talking about in that case. You'll also see in that little packet a letter, a copy of a letter that I had received today, and I know that I believe all of you have received from the State of Connecticut, the State Preservation Office. So in case you hadn't all had a chance to get one yet, I made my copy and delivered it for you, and that it does state that on, you know, on the behalf of the State Historic Preservation Office, that essentially they would like to see that the commission should remain intact and can actually grow, add more properties to the commission, providing an ordinance amendment is put in place to expand that, which is already in the state statute, and that they would come and help perhaps with some funding in that area. So you can read that on your own. But this commission, of course, has said in the past, we say again that we think that we are, have value in town and should remain intact, even if the trust who owns two of the properties, the town does own the other, the town could avail itself perhaps some historic funds to clean up the property that they have, which is really getting overrun with a lot of invasive trees down at the Blakeslee property. And if the trust says, no, they're really not going to be ready to do any other exterior work or parking in the ADA access for any time in the future, then as a zero-budget commission, we cost you absolutely nothing and are at least available, you know, when that time may or may come. So we do recommend that as a benefit to the community and to the future owners, that we do remain in place. But also in response to the last meeting, the issue of tension between the trust and the commission needs further comment. With over $1 million to hire professional restoration contractors and architects with experience and understanding of historic architecture and of the proper materials and application thereof, the trust has done good work, which the commission has never denied, and commends them for it in hopes for continued good work on their two remaining properties. No certificate of appropriateness has ever been denied. Conditions that might have been attached to those applications were generally a written reiteration of a verbal testimony by the owner's architect or project manager. The commission has always had an open door. If, due to the lengthy fulfillment of some of these COAs well beyond the expected finish date on the trust application, circumstances changed. And the commission can, by statute, consider variations under certain circumstances and could, if deemed appropriate, have amended that original COA. But the trust chose not to ask. The commission believes in accountability for actions and decisions, first and foremost of the commission itself as a municipal entity. A COA application with conditions required by statute, clear reasons for inclusion, annual meetings, status reports, minutes, if a COA remains outstanding, we believe require reasons for the same. Mr. Letourneau, the trust project manager, has given those status updates, and that's what was included in our reports and minutes as reasons for remaining open. The commission is accountable for reasons when acceptance or additional considerations are necessary, such as fulfillment of conditions that need to be addressed before closing a COA. Mr. Testa remarked the word "feud." This is not true of the commission. Frustrated, irritated, yes, but we continued fair treatment with each new COA. The commission has a responsibility to review the status of these applications. The commission has a responsibility of inspection to confirm the application and conditions are met. If the trust, per Mr. Straub, finds our annual reports or minutes as an intentional seeking of mischief by the trust, as he put it at the last meeting, their perception is grossly mistaken. The commission is simply being accountable, and in no way intentional attacks against the trust. All I can say at this point, then, is that should the town council determine to eliminate the properties ordinance, we would then respectfully request a further six months to finalize any required reports, double-check town files are in fact complete with original documentation. Do you have any questions of me?
I do not, but I suspect after the public hearing, I will certainly offer that to the council.
Thank you.
Certainly. Mrs. Morganstein?
Gina Morganstein, South Main Street. As a member of the public that lives two doors away from one of these properties, I've thought over the years, after we did yard cleanup at the Johnson Mansion, and then many years later, the fence finally got installed, that we were maybe finally getting the downtown to open the doors of some of these properties. After all, I think something in the neighborhood of $22,000 or $30,000 a year is given to these properties yearly in our budget. Our taxpayer dollars are going to these properties. And lo and behold, I hear of this ordinance issue and that, again, yeah, these people giving of their free time and expertise to help this are being asked to be taken away. A question that I've not heard an answer, Mr. Servoni. Who raised the request for this?
The answer that was given at the ordinance committee meeting was that it was me.
Is that in fact the case?
It is.
So it's you that has asked for this, at the request of anyone else, or you of your own?
No. No one else requested this.
So as we look at the function of the Historic Preservation Homes, and they have been given grant money over the years, and signed and put checkboxes onto grant applications so that these properties could get their grant money, and now at least one of these properties is pretty well done, again, I, as a neighbor two doors down, paying tax dollars into these properties, thought, oh, could we become like Weathersfield, and people will come to downtown Wallingford and go to the Silver Museum and tour the house? I don't see that happening, and I see this maneuver, for lack of another word, as a group of people in charge of these properties, closing ranks for I don't know what purpose, but it makes me wonder. I see some very helpful women, and I suppose there may be men as well. I apologize. I'm not at all sure who all is with Ms. Brishers in this endeavor, but they're doing very good work, and we should be welcoming them. Apparently, their expertise, it sounds like, could even be utilized if requested by a private owner of a historic property. We should be turning towards the benefit of people who are willing to give their expertise rather than develop- rather than developing what appears to me some questions as to impropriety or propriety. I'm not sure which it is, but I really question what's behind this. Thank you.
Ray Rice, 96 Pearson Drive. If this commission is eliminated, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
The responsibility for the care of the properties, what happens?
Doesn't change.
Pardon?
Doesn't change. The trust maintains the properties.
The trust maintains the properties?
Correct.
Okay. There's not two different entities?
The commission is the one we are looking, that, looking repealing the ordinance that created.
Okay. I, you know, I know there's two different deals, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure. And I got a question. Years ago, there was a house next to the Yankee Silversmith. Do you remember that, Mr. Letourneau? Where is that house?
If you know.
It has been in storage since it was taken down.
And who's responsible for assembling that someday?
It could be anybody. It could be, right now, it belongs to the Wallingford Historic Preservation Trust. But they could, they could assemble it if the funds someday are available, or it could be sold to a private person, and they could assemble it either in town or out of town. The sole purpose of that was, when Home Depot was coming in...
Exactly. I remember. I worked on it.
They were going to tear it down.
But if this commission is eliminated, does that, would that in limbo?
That has nothing to do with this commission at all.
Okay. That's all I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Christie Collett, and I am a member of the commission, and I really want to address a couple of confusions because it concerns me greatly.
Ma'am, can you pull the microphone down a little lower, please? Thank you.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. Start over? We're good. Cheryl Christie Collett, I'm a member of the Historic Properties Commission. When we were here at the meeting, the ordinance meeting, Mr. Tester referred to discomfort of feud, or whatever the wordage was, and I've been thinking about that. And then Mr. Strab's words that night also referred to us being as kind of some sort of gotcha entity. And then tonight, he referred to us in some sort of adversarial way, my perception of his comments. I really want two things to become very clear. I don't know the newest members of the trust, and so to my mind, it feels like they're being told things that are not necessarily true about the commission. In addition, if our annual minutes, or minutes in our annual report are perceived as less than favorable, then things maybe should be changing. We are honorable people, and we are doing a job. We are trying to do what is best. But to paint a picture of the commission being less than honorable is problematic in my mind, and I would like that to get off the table. The other piece is that we have never had the mission or the role to actively fundraise for the trust. And this is something that has been said around town. It is my understanding that some counselors have been led to believe this. We have never been tasked to raise money for them. We are simply something they can check the box on an application, that we exist, and so grant people say that's a really good thing, that you have that commission to be a part of your process. What I believe is misconfused, and we've tried to share this, and we've tried to get this out in the public, is the trust can go to Mayor Dickinson and ask that we become a certified local government entity, and with that organization being put forth by the mayor, then that entity can apply for grants on behalf of the trust. It is never, and if you read the paperwork from day one, the commission has never had the ability or the charge to attempt to raise money directly for the trust or any other property owner. So I wanted those things to be very clear on the record. I feel like there has been misconstrued statements and misconstrued looks at us, and I believe that we have done our job with honor and transparency. Thank you.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. As at the ordinance meeting, I'm just in a quandary on why you would want to, and now that you say Attorney Servoni, you're the one who wants to get rid of this, I mean, commission, or asked to get rid of this commission. I mean, it seems that you have a group of dedicated people. I know this has been said before, and I know Ms. Breschers has some historic training on these types of properties and so forth. Wouldn't you want to have these type of people here? And if Mr. Rice just said there's the building in storage, as Mr. Letourneau said, in the future, if you wanted to have that box checked for a grant application or a grant, wouldn't that help at all? So I mean, these are things, and in the last meeting, Attorney Fishmine mentioned that this group, the one you're trying to get rid of, provides you with an annual report or minutes and gives you a status of what's going on. Just on that basis alone, you get some overview of the properties and what's happening with them. The group doesn't cost the town anything, and if they're adding to the benefit of these properties, getting rid of, there's just something not right here. And as Counselor Testa said, there's some feud or something of that nature. There's just something not right here, and it's just not, getting rid of a commission because there might be some personality conflicts or something of that nature down the road, unless you can explain a real reason, it's just not the right thing to do and to get rid of a commission in this manner. Thank you.
Ms. DeLoro?
My name is Catherine DeLoro. I live at 6 Brown Street in Wallingford. Please forgive me, I have to have notes because otherwise I'll ramble on. I wish to speak against the repealing of the ordinance creating the Historic Property Commission. In the current economic climate, with funding being cut both on a state and on a municipal level, it would seem prudent for this council to maintain any zero-cost volunteer oversight commission. I have had the privilege of doing a little research on my own, and I understand this commission has very little teeth, pretty much none. That being said, I have served as an auditor for two decades. I cannot, I'm not sure I can properly articulate the importance of having an oversight. I'm not implying that the trust is doing something inappropriate, and I certainly don't know of anything the commission is doing inappropriate. I'm not a member of it either. But the idea that the council would consider removing an oversight commission that has no cost to the town, no cost to our budget, and does nothing but allow another level of security to the taxpayers, to the funds that you hand to the trust, and allows an avenue of complete accountability and transparency, because my understanding is this commission does file reports with the state of Connecticut. And then when the woman, I understand, I guess she runs the commission, stands up and says that the state finds it inappropriate and they would like to see it continue, the thought that the council would still continue to even contemplate the disillusionment, the, I'm sorry, the dissolving of this, seems to me inappropriate. And I certainly don't mean to tell the council their job. I voted for most of you, and I would assume that you know what you're doing. That being said, the Historic Property Commission allows all taxpayers a level of transparency, and I fail to see the benefit to the town or to the citizens by elimination of this zero-cost volunteer commission, and I urge both Chairman Servoni and each of the council that are here to reconsider and to think long and hard before you move any safeguards from any process in government. Thank you.
I'll make my remarks now. Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. Being on South Main Street, I'm in what was proposed to be the historic district. It's one of the reasons we bought in that area. One of the things talked about at the ordinance committee is, and it wasn't established, but I've gone back and looked, I'm a member of the Historic Trust for National Preservation for decades. There are studies that say, time after time, that historic districts or historic properties at least maintain values or raise the values of everything around them. Now, as having a historic house, one of the reasons we bought that was the integrity of that house. And talking to Ms. Breschers, it's very important to me to maintain the integrity of that house. One of the things that this commission can do is advise, in terms of the exterior of my house, if I wanted to add a porch or something, not only could they advise with their expertise, which I don't think anybody here would question, is that they would also be helpful to us to obtain grants, that they could serve in that same capacity as they do for the trust. So the public has an interest in maintaining not only free expertise, but they could also give us the chance to obtain grants and raise the values, not only for our own house, but for the houses around it. So I think there's more to consider than just the trust. We have an asset here that costs nothing, but we have something that's invaluable, is that we have years of experience and expertise that could be used to enhance not only my personal value for my house, but the value of the whole town.
Ms. Morgenstein.
Gina Morgenstein, South Main Street. Mr. Chairman, can we ask, is Mr. Letourneau, who is on Historic Preservation Trust and has had work done for the trust, going to be voting on this matter?
My understanding is that he is not on the trust, and that at some point, he may have done work for the trust.
He certainly was the primary driver in getting the fence installed for the trust. I would say that if I were sitting up there, I would be saying, I do not want to see any question of impropriety in my voting on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, may I? I am not a member of the Preservation Trust. I have in the past asked to do work for the Preservation Trust. Years ago, I was a member of the Preservation Trust. I will no longer do any work for the trust, will not be involved with anything with the trust. I am not involved at all. So there is no so-called impropriety, because what's past is past. So I do plan on voting for this.
Well, I'm showing my appearance of my question. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Ray Ross, Silver Pond Apartments, I'm Vice President, Preservation Trust. Just to correct misinformation, in the summer of 2014, the Johnson Mansion was opened nine days, nine Sundays in a row, plus 4th of July. It was open that Christmas, three days for a holiday extravaganza. In December of 2015, it was opened up nine days. And this year, it's been open three times. We had an open house showcasing, Mr. Neff, who's a local artist, and we had his work in there, and we had a reception, and we honored him. This Sunday, it was open, open house. We had many people come in. This coming Sunday, it's a major event for the Wallingford Garden Club, which they're showcasing their arrangements using the trust. So over the past three years, we have had open houses and been open to the public some 27 times, and they were all attended. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? There being none, I close the public hearing, and I bring it back to the council for motions, if appropriate. Is there? I'd prefer to conduct the discussion under the guise of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move we repeal Chapter 127, Historic Properties of the Code of Town of Wallingford, from the ordinances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to clarify a couple of things. Speaking of the idea of misinterpretations and so on and so forth, I did make several comments at the ordinance committee meeting. I've actually had comments on discussions and social media. And let me clarify a couple of things. I want to make it clear that my choice of words at the ordinance committee meeting and visible frustration were due far more to my frustration with the, what I would say are the forces behind this effort in the first place. I hope, and if I implied by using the term feud or gave any of the members of the commission the impression that I was, for lack of a better term, faulting them for what I might have seen as a feud, I apologize. That was not my intent. I'm also, I'm a stickler for words and for what I see sometimes are misinterpretations. And in challenging them, sometimes my, where I stand on the matter might be a little confusing. I may be the only person up here, I don't know, I can't speak for anyone else. I may be the only person up here who's still leaning against approving this. However, having said that, I still have some questions about things I think have been said and implied. It was my understanding that the commission has no financial oversight over anything that the trust does. Am I correct in that assumption? If anybody can answer that, you know, legal department or Mr. Chairman or...
My understanding is that, no, they don't act as an audit unit. They issue a certificate of appropriateness if there is work done on one of the properties that is grant-funded, and before the grant can be released or the project completed, that a COA is required. So they don't...
Okay.
That's the extent to which they have any financial involvement.
Also, you know, there have been comments or questions raised about the management and use of the properties owned by the trust. Again, I don't believe that those types of issues are relevant to the mission of the commission as well. Am I correct in that? Would you agree with me there?
I'm not sure I completely understood.
Well, I mean, the trust owns the properties.
Correct.
And frankly, as far as operating it, managing it, deciding how it's used, what's done with it, who goes in, who goes out, that's their responsibility. And the Historic Properties Commission has no oversight over that whatsoever.
That's correct.
I think that there's an impression out there that some of that type of oversight is part of their role, and that leads some people to say, why in heaven's name would you disband the organization that's keeping an eye on that stuff? Because frankly, they don't, in my understanding, have no oversight over that stuff. Having said that, and if I'm going to oppose abolishing this commission, I want it to be for the right reason and not for some misunderstanding of what they may be responsible for. My understanding is, they exist to... My understanding is, they exist to see to it that the historical integrity, physically, the physical historical integrity of the properties that they own is maintained, and there's a set of eyes that are responsible for doing that, for sort of checking on the plans and saying, yes, no, please do it differently, so on and so forth. And secondly, I hope nobody thought that I've ever implied that they were responsible for going out and getting money. But I have made the comment, and I would again, that they're, my understanding, again, was that one of the reasons they, it was requested that they be established was so that in opportunities where we were seeking, the trust was seeking grants, that might facilitate such an action. So I suppose, going forward, I can envision a situation where grants might be sought, again, and/or it turns out another property is added that might need to be worked on and so forth. So I could envision a need for this commission, and that's why I've been wavering. Then at the same time, I, some of the correspondence we've been getting and the presentations sometimes seem a little off track, and that bothers me. This letter from the state, Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer, raised my eyebrows a little bit, because it really was, it seemed to me that this person was concerned about historic property designation on the properties under the control of the trust. And made me look again at the ordinance, and I was, I thought we were repealing the establishment of the commission, but if we repeal Chapter 127, we're repealing everything having to do with historic properties. Unless I have that wrong, that causes me some concern. It's a very short ordinance. If we abolish it, as far as I can tell, the original three and now existing two properties that are designated as historic properties are no longer designated as historic properties. And that's it. And we have a Historic Preservation Trust that owns these two properties, but they are not, by ordinance, considered historic properties anymore. And with that elimination goes the Historic Properties Commission that was established as a part of the ordinance. So I've said a lot, but that's where I'm a little stuck right now. I can understand difficulties that may exist. I can even understand, I suppose, the idea that there's no real existing use for the commission at the moment, because right now, nothing's going on that requires them to oversee anything. But I go back to my original comments at the ordinance committee meeting, that just something about this bothers me. And I can't support it at this point, but I hope somebody can explain to me what changes might result from repealing this ordinance, insofar as the historic property designation goes of those two properties the trust owns.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Testa mentioned a couple of things that I think weigh on just the pure legal area, and the repeal of the ordinance in no way affects any, the designation of any property that's been put on the historic registry. It doesn't change any designation anywhere. It repeals a commission that was set up for specific purposes, I believe primarily under the statutes of the state of Connecticut. But it wouldn't change at all that we have properties in town that are on the historic registry, or we have properties that are owned by the Preservation Trust. It doesn't change any of that. We did not, we did not, through the ordinance, designate certain properties as historic. In fact, there's only three properties within the jurisdiction of the commission, and we have many more properties that are historic in the town. The other thing is, you know, the town did go out at one point, and I think there were twice votes were held to have an historic district. Those votes failed, and a lot of these things, Preservation Trust and other things, were efforts to maintain the presence and emphasize the importance of the historic structures in town and how we would deal with them. But an historic district itself would have many of the controls over what happens on a property, and you have to get approvals from that district for improvements to property that is deemed historic, at least external improvements. I don't think that that is what we're talking about here with the Historic Commission. So it's easy to confuse Historic District and the Historic Properties Commission, but they're very different. It was actual vote by the town that rejected the Historic District, and the commission was adopted for, you know, the purposes, I guess, everyone is aware of. But it doesn't change designations of any property.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm actually very, I understand pretty clearly, you know, the difference between a district, I mean, that kind of has led up to a lot of our confusion. We use language and statutes that talk about districts. But I would question what you said, Mayor, in that we never designated these properties as historic, because right in the ordinance, it says the following three properties, and the real property used in connection therewith are hereby designated historic properties. That's what it says. The purpose of this chapter is to designate certain specific buildings as historic properties. And then it goes on, and to create an Historic Properties Commission to administer such properties. So all along, this ordinance has been in place, these properties, three properties, were designated as historic properties, and the Historic Property Commission was supposed to administer them. So by repealing this ordinance, I just, I guess we are, we are repealing our local designation of these properties as historic, because it's the only way we've done it. We may, they may have a national or state designation now that we've pursued, and that will stay in place. I'm okay with that. But I'm just a little confused here.
Well, I think, I think the commission, the ordinance, was for the purpose of qualifying for grants that the state was offering. There's no authority for the commission to dictate how the properties are maintained, to my knowledge, but they do have a role to play with regard to access to grants. Ultimately, unless you have an historic district, a district has the authority to tell people how they, what they must do on their property. If they don't do it, however, I don't know that anyone has the authority, under state law, to tell the owner of historic property how they must maintain it. They can't do certain things to it, they may not be able to demolish it, but I don't know that there's any capability of saying, you must put X amount of money into the property on an annual basis, or anything like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest, I'm not suggesting that's the case.
So we're, I mean, we're, there's a lot of these concepts that overlap and everything, but there was, Historic District certainly has authorities that are fairly broad, and I don't think we're talking about any of that in what is dealing, what we've dealt with in the ordinance.
I'm just reading the language of the ordinance, and it references that the commission will administer these properties under, you know, pursuant to the authority of a certain general statute, Section 7147, which I believe we talked about. All right, I've made my, I've made myself clear, well, I don't know if I've made myself clear, certainly said what I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Fishburne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So looking at the ordinance itself, if we look at 127-3, it tells us that historically, the town council created December 9 of 1997, a Historic Properties Commission Study Commission. And when the commission, the Historic Properties Commission was put into place, that Historic Properties Commission Study Commission was terminated by the express language of the ordinance that's before us. So our forefathers decided to create this commission, and certainly, there's been representations that the sole reason that this commission was created was for the purposes of applying for grants. There's no backup for that. There's no minutes, it's not in the ordinance. So I don't know that I can rely totally upon that. The letter from the state, paper's worth about half a penny, and that's probably the value that I put on it, because it's like, we don't know, the person's not before us, we didn't request it, we don't know what the individual was told in order for this letter to be created. The commission itself does have teeth, in that, and that was one of the things that I wanted to know about at the ordinance committee. And I never got an answer, but if we look at 7-147W, it talks about orders and actions by the commission. If they aren't complied with, then we go to 7-147H, which gives the commission the power to bring a lawsuit, and, you know, to sue whoever is not doing what they said should be done, and for the commission to recoup its attorney's fees and costs, and there's fines and all that stuff. So there is teeth. So perhaps the issue with that is that the commission, which has expressed frustration with doings and non-doings in the past, perhaps the commission has not utilized the tools that it's been given in its toolbox to enforce what it's there for, for whatever reason. There's also obviously a conflict between factions of the trust and factions of the commission. And the conflict is not one of communication, it's just, it's, it's unresolvable. Do I see the answer being to just throw the baby out with the bathwater and get rid of the commission? I just don't see that being the proper way to deal with the situation. Because certainly, the way the ordinance is currently drafted, we have the different sections. We have 172-2 that talks about, these are the properties that, at that time, were being designated historic properties. And then we have 172-3, which says, this is the commission. They tie together. But nothing stops a property owner in the future from saying, here, town, we have an old house. It's historic, and we would like you to put it under this process. Without 172, they can't put it anywhere. You know, so that isn't available to people. I just don't see what's before us to be the answer to the benefit of the taxpayers. And certainly, to Counsel Testa's point, if you get rid of the whole thing, then the properties that we've designated as being historic, they aren't historic anymore. I mean, we have the registry, whatever, and I don't know about that situation. But I, you know, I really have trouble telling volunteers, that are obviously passionate about their work, that aren't costing the taxpayers any dollars, that their function is not limited as has been represented to us, at least by the language of the statute, state statutes, all that stuff, that you're not wanted, and that we don't need you. Because I think there is, if working harmoniously together, there is a need for the commission. That's my take on this at this point. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I apologize to everyone for my lateness. I'm of two minds about this issue. I think the group of volunteers concept rings true for me, because we do have people interested in historic properties. We have two groups of people in town that are interested in historic properties. And so we've put one in a position of authority, as a sort of a regulatory body, even though there's no budget. By statute, we've created a regulatory organization that oversees another group of essentially what are private citizens that are interested in the same thing. So I have concerns when we have a regulatory body that then is at odds with the, with other similarly aligned folks, and I'm not clear on the reasons why. I think that if we were to dissolve this body, certainly the folks that are interested in historic property could continue to do so, and could essentially do, from what we heard in their testimonies, that they really haven't taken any action in the time that they've been in existence to manage private, the privately owned historic properties. And my understanding would be that their powers would be to bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or so on and so forth. So nothing would prevent that from happening in the future as private citizens, it would sound like. So to me, the standard for keeping a regulatory body is not necessarily, so to keep a private organization, you just have to have like-minded interests. To keep a regulatory organization, there needs to be a governmental function there. And I'm not sure that that exists. However, at the same time, you know, is the issue here with the, with this particular commission, or is the issue one of something more nefarious that we can't necessarily, that I can't really put my fingers on? So I guess after all that, I'm really not sure where I stand on this issue. I'm sensitive to both sides. I don't see that if we dissolve the commission and we needed a new commission, I don't think there would be an issue reappointing another one in the future. But at the same time, repealing the whole 127, I think, to eliminate the historic properties, might be a bit of a drastic step. I think one of the things that would prevent someone from, if you had a historic property, would prevent them from going through this process to get it in the ordinance, is that then they would have to deal with all this stuff that we're going through right now. So I think that that's the barrier. So maybe there's other ways to clean this up without necessarily repealing the commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Lavin.
Thank you. To speak to what's been mentioned already before by the other counselors, this, for me, and all of this, really started with the people, with the volunteers that are passionate on both sides. When two people came forward and contested a single appointment, and that, and we've appointed people to the HBC before, but I think that started the conversation of, oh, why do you want to be on, and why do you want to be on? And then it's like, well, wait a minute, what do you guys even do in the first place? And that's when, that's when we all started kind of kicking it around and asking ourselves, well, what is going on? What, what purpose is being served? And I'm not even still clear on that, in the sense, so much so that I'm looking to repeal the ordinance. This was a very organic kind of growth for me to get to this point. Counselor Testa had mentioned that the commission is looking to, it looks at the physical historic integrity, and to make sure that it's maintained. But according to what? We don't, we don't have some town book that says, this is the way we want our stuff to look. We don't have anything like that whatsoever. We have a commission of people, and we have the Historic Properties Trust, which is also a bunch of people that have their own ideas and have studied history. We have, we basically have eight people that all are just arguing about differences, you know, differences of opinions. It's all kind of arbitrary to me, and I don't see, at this point, without the grants, to facilitate the, I don't, it's just all arbitrary for me. It doesn't, I don't see anybody harmed. It doesn't, I don't see anybody harmed by having, by having the need for a commission. It's another level of government that's, you know, what do, I don't, I don't get what we, what stake we have in the Historic Properties Trust, having these properties, and why does the government all of a sudden care? We don't, we're not even telling the commission what we're looking for as a counselor or as a government. We're just saying, okay, go. And that, to me, is just too wishy-washy. You know, who, who does the Historic Properties Commission even really answer to? You know, they talk about, you know, they're kind of watching tax dollars, and, but over the past two to three to five years, if we didn't have the Historic Properties Commission, what, how would Wallingford be different? What would, what would be different? You know, grants aside, I don't even know if we've, I think we've kind of just wrapped up some grants, maybe, in the fourth or fifth year, but what, I don't get why we should keep it. And somebody convinced me, maybe, you know, that's, that's what I guess I'm looking for. I evolved to this point of removing or disbanding the Historic Properties Commission. That's not how I came into this. So, I want somebody to pull me back, if that's even possible. Tell me why. You know, we did, we did receive a letter today from the State Department Economic and Community Development, and it does reference that they think we should keep the commission and not repeal the ordinance. But it's a couple of paragraphs of history about the legislation, and then I'm going to read the last paragraph. "The statutes are silent on the issue of dissolving historic districts or reversing establishment of a historic property, and this office thinks it would be imprudent to repeal the ordinance. There is great value to the town in retaining a Historic Properties Commission for the benefit of its residents. Further, our office would be happy to provide technical and financial assistance to help the commission promote and preserve cultural assets of the town." That doesn't convince me of anything. It just says, we think you should keep it. It doesn't say why. It doesn't say what purpose it would serve. It just says, keep it. Without the grants, I just don't see the need. And, and I think there are far greater registries and lists that these properties, including the three on here, are associated with, that they're not going to fall apart because they're not one of the three on the Wallingford list. In fact, being, we're being told that out of two or three properties, that it's, it's an inconvenience to be on the Wallingford list. I want to hear, you know, other, other counselors speak, and again, you know, many members of the public. Yes, honorable people are on both sides. I don't believe for a second that, that there is, there is dishonorable job, job being committed by the Historic Properties Commission, but I don't know what that job is. So, I'm just, you know, we're sitting here, like, why am I going to go through all this effort to appoint more people and keep this other function of government going? And I have not been convinced by what's been said so far that we should do that. You know, oversight and safeguards, based on what? Based on the opinion of five people versus the opinion of five people on the other side of the room that are actually raising the money and trying to build it and own the property? That's it for now. Thanks.
At this point, I would articulate what my position is, and I don't really need to, because Counsel Laffin has pretty well stated it, so I'm not going to take up everybody's time restating what Counsel Laffin had to say. The one thing I would say differently is that I look at the Historical Society Building that's a little further down across the street from the Johnson Mansion. That's not under the purview of the commission. The property is maintained, as far as I can tell, historically appropriately, without any oversight, and nobody's calling into question the motives of the Historical Society for the work that they do. So, I think there's a prime example that these properties can be preserved appropriately without a level of government that does require counsel time and energy in terms of reappointing members. With that, I will defer to other counselors. There being no comment from the council, I open up to the public. Ms. Casagrande.
Seal Casagrande, 25 Turnberry Road. This commission that was sort of innocuous for all the years they've served, and they don't apply for grants, they have to wait for someone to apply for grant, in which they sort of sign off on it, I'm not sure of the logistics. But here, all of a sudden, they've become the prime focus of this, all of a sudden, for no reason that I can understand. If you don't understand what they are, it's because you haven't done your homework. They've given you tons of information about what, who they are and what they do. They're an oversight committee to make sure that anything that is done to historic properties is done correctly. That's their sole function. And I, as a private citizen, can call on them to say, I own a historic property, I'd like to do something, can you tell me what I should do? They cost us nothing. All of a sudden, and they have expertise, great expertise, I've used the services of Ms. Brishir's myself, so I know the level of expertise that she has. And what they do is to say, this is done correctly, the trust doesn't have to do it that way, but all they're doing is saying, this is how it should be done, according to historical standards. That's what their expertise is. They know what most of us don't know. And I'm not saying the trust doesn't know it, and there may be some rational reason for differences. That wasn't said correctly, but you understand my point. So, no one has explained to me why this commission, that is probably the least well-known of any commission in town, has suddenly got to be disbanded. It suddenly has attracted all this information, all this attention, I mean. And I sit here tonight, and I listen to all of this, and all I can think of is, this is why, in this election season, in this country, the public is so outraged with government. This is exactly why. This is a microcosm of what's happening in the general population of this country. Because people don't understand where government comes from, and no one explains it to them. I have yet to hear one person say, this commission needs to be disbanded because of this. All I have heard anyone say is, they don't do anything. Well, they do do something. And there's this lack of transparency as to why this is going on. This is pervasive throughout this country, and that's why you have the candidates running that are running, because the public is tired of the way government operates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. When you get to the mic, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Daniel McKay. I am a nine-month resident of Wallingford. I live at 528 North Main Street. I live adjacent to the Royce House property, which is one of the properties owned by the trust. I came to Connecticut a year ago tomorrow to take the position of Executive Director of the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation. And so, I lead the statewide Historic Preservation Advocacy Group, not-for-profit. We did not send you that letter, that's State Agency. And so, it's intriguing to me. It's, and I didn't come here, I came here to sort of watch the process. I certainly have seen the news coverage. We've gotten some calls, me and my staff. My staff and I have gotten calls about this issue, and that's not atypical for us as a statewide preservation group to do that. Our offices are in Hampden. We cover the state. We are advocates for advancing historic preservation as an economic and community development tool in Connecticut. I moved to Wallingford from a very lovely rural community in upstate New York, and I moved to Wallingford to try Main Street on for size. And I think you have, I think you have the best Main Street in Connecticut, and this is why I moved here. I moved here because I had walkability, I had integrity of historic resources, I had a beautiful historic downtown, if we ignore parts of Route 5 at least, and I had beautiful residential neighborhoods, North Elm, North Main, South Main. I came here for the integrity of historic resources in this community. I invested in this community for that reason, and, and I've enjoyed it here very much. So, that's me, that's who I am in terms of my residence status. Jerry and the volunteers and members of the Board of the Trust have been extraordinarily welcoming to me and my wife. We are her budding neighbors. We appreciate the care and attention that they've put into that property. I live in that sort of orphaned white cape between the Tudor Revival and the Royce House. It's got vinyl siding. Can't believe I moved into a house with vinyl siding, but that'll come down. Can't believe I moved into a house with vinyl windows, but those will come out and be replaced with wood, and we'll get that house back to what it was in 1931. It's a treat, a privilege to look out on the Royce House. If I can't own a 1760 salt box, at least I can look at one next door. And, and yet, looking at this from the perspective of a statewide preservation advocacy group, and at the macro level, it's a concern to see a community back off historic resource protection, which at the macro level is sort of what's being proposed. If you abolish the commission, you're taking a step back in terms of historic resource protection. Agreed, it applies to a very small group of buildings. In some ways, you have the most unique historic district law in the state. Most have more empowered commissions that are doing survey work and extending oversight just as described to multiple properties under private ownership, owner-occupied, commercial properties, et cetera. So, it's a very unique commission. It has the smallest portfolio in the state, and that portfolio is an irregular one, in the sense that, as we just acknowledged up here, that it applies to the trust, but not to the Historical Association. It applies to one municipal building, but not others. So, yeah, it's, it's unique. It is unique. When I look at the ordinance, when I look at the concerns and the complaints that have been expressed, I wonder why, over all the years the Board has had oversight, having established the commission, why more control or more, more wasn't built into the local law, so that you would have, perhaps, the power of appointment, that you would have term limits that worked a little more fluently or fluidly? That the issues that I see, that have been identified, without taking one side or the other, are in some ways a lack of oversight and involvement by the town board. And I guess I would like to say that this is an opportunity not to wipe this out, but to make it better, to make it more purposeful. Size and scope to be determined. I'm not suggesting you need a full commission. I don't know if there's a political will to make this a typical commission in a typical Connecticut community, or the public support for that. But I hate to see a community take a step away from preservation without having a plan in place to take that step forward again in a new context, new role, new capabilities. And so, all I see right now is, I worry about taking a step back with no plan in place. The oversight that the commission provides to the properties, I think, is an important one. And how do you, you know, there are tools in place where if the commission, or if the town, excuse me, or if the Wallingford Trust, or Historical Association too, if they wanted to, there are protections that we can put in place as the Connecticut Trust to safeguard those properties, provide the oversight to prevent inappropriate exterior, or in some cases, interior alterations. There are ways to sort of fill the gap that you're stepping away from, but I would much prefer to see local government involved, engaged with participation of local residents. I would much rather see the commission continue forward than to cease to exist and then, and then a vacuum. There was a discussion earlier about local registry, you know, local register status, which is just these three buildings, National Register of Historic Places, which is our downtown commercial district, extending down South Main, and then, despite the fact that in 1989, 1990, there was, there were votes taken, ordinance not passed, to extend or create a local district commission covering South and North Main and the core central business district. The survey work that was done in support of that commission, '89, '90, '91, actually was a backdoor listing onto the state register. So, North Main Street and portions of North Elm, and one of the cross streets, first cross street, so it might be Curtis, those houses all the way up to the cemetery on North Main, for instance, are actually listed on the State Register of Historic Places. Both North and South Main are qualified for the state historic rehabilitation tax credit for owner-occupied homes. You know, the buildings downtown serving commercial purposes are eligible for the state commercial credit, as well as the federal credit for rehabilitation. There is all sorts of education that could be happening in this community to advance preservation, quality of life, integrity of your architectural build-out and heritage, that this commission could be tasked to do. It does not just have to serve this limited regulatory role. You could actually seek to promote and expand its educational role. You could have it pursue grants. You need to task it with the work you want to do. But I do think the work they've done, you know, they have gotten two important properties in this town to a certain point, and we're at that point now where you think, maybe we can back off, maybe we don't need this. I just ask you to consider very carefully, what does that say about this community's, my community's commitment to historic preservation? So, I've only been here nine months. I have 17 years professional experience doing policy work in historic preservation, primarily in New York State. A joyful year in Connecticut for me to do that work here, and, you know, this is home turf now, and I just, I lament that things have reached the point where the council is so strongly considering abolishing a tool that has played its role and could play an even more effective and more important role in the community. So, I'll leave it at that. I'm a newcomer. You can take that, that perspective for what it is, but I'm someone who is here for the historic resources of Wallingford. I own property and pay taxes. I'm here because of what Wallingford is, and we should do everything, I think, in this community to support and enhance what makes this community unique, and it's the integrity, it's the fact that between the cemetery on North Main, all the way down South Main, you have lost very little. You have lost very little, and what you have lost has been moved, not, not lost to time. So, it's a remarkably intact central business district and adjacent neighborhoods, and it's what brought me here. Please be careful with, you know, what, what you choose to say or demonstrate about the role that preservation plays in the quality of life here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Morganstein.
I'd like to commend that gentleman, and his remarks well-stated. Again, I was, we brought our property on Main Street because of the historic nature of that. It was pointed out that Historic Society runs, but there is a difference between trust properties and historic, the historic house. The trust takes town money, so there is a governmental connection there that isn't there with the historic. Every year, there is money given, $20,000 plus to the trust? Yes, no?
Mr. Chairman, I can help. It's a matching grant program, so $20,000 is available to the Preservation Trust, $10,000 is available to the Historic Society, and both have taken advantage of that program.
So, there is a governmental connection, and the government does have an interest. It is taxpayer money, and the commission does add another layer. But getting away from that a bit, it's also been talked about, you have two groups, and they kind of disagree at times, it's wishy-washy. Every year, the National Trust, the National Historic Preservation Trust has conferences, national conferences. There are colleges where you go for those courses. This is not some, well, I think maybe this will be good, well, versus that will be good. There's specific criteria that directs this work, and that's the expertise that this commission gives to hope, hopefully oversee the int- commission gives to hopefully oversee the integrity of these buildings. This is not like, "I'll pull this out of the sky because I think this is appropriate." There's certain criteria. It's not something that's just made up. It's specific, and there's years of it, there's courses on it, there's conferences on this. This is not something that's just made up as we go. But this is a resource. We have this whole district, and there is oversight. I get the Preservation Magazine as a member of the Trust, and for years, they have a section where they go over, they used to call it "Yikes," where they look and highlight what has been done to historic buildings that is totally outlandish. They also do a feature where things are threatened and lost and preserved. So things happen all the time, the historic buildings and areas. I've been to beautiful towns in upperstate New York, and it's an interest of mine. So I'll go and see the historic magazines, and time after time, I've seen beautiful Victorian homes, beautiful colonial homes. They'll have a picture of it, and they'll say, "Now a parking lot." Things are lost all the time. Things are done all the time. We have something that costs us nothing, but we have a valuable expertise. I think it was said during the ordinance committee, and I'll echo what this gentleman said, maybe what should be considered tonight is giving more responsibility, more teeth to the commission, to make it more viable, to keep the integrity, and to maybe expand it, because it's a resource not being used. And if the fault is that it's not being used, maybe the fault is in the mission and in the empowerment that this council can give or take away.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council. Counsel Laffin, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. No, I thank you for the new gentleman's comments and Mr. Morgenstein's. Otherwise, you know, my invitation to convince me to change my mind was met with, "You haven't done your homework." And surprisingly, that's not very convincing. And it's actually kind of insulting that we haven't, have we not read all of the letters that we've received, and the emails, and the packets, and the annual report, of which, half of which is an explanation of what the commission is and its history versus what it's done? A two-and-a-half-page annual report. That is my confusion, and that is what I've been expressing over the two or three meetings that we've had this conversation. And nothing has been enough to convince me otherwise. Why disband it? Because, what is it doing? I get, I get what this gentleman was getting at, and if we're going to look at that, then we've got to put it in the same pool that, you know, we're revising the whole charter, where we've asked the Charter Revision Commission to look at disbanding how many committees, commissions, or organizations, or selectmen, because they don't do anything. That's the type of overhaul that maybe we need, maybe we need to look at, but right now, this commission, I just don't get what they do. And I'm not satisfied with being convinced either way that the answer is sitting with what we have now, especially when two out of the three property owners don't even want to be on the list anymore, and the third property owner is the town of Wallingford. Why even have it then? They're probably just, if we didn't disband the commission, the Trust will probably just try and get their names off the list anyway. They'll stay on their national and state lists, but they won't want anything to do with the town list. They exhausted their use for us. They have no use for us. They're not, they don't need anybody to administer over grants anymore. It's not useful. That's what we need to start looking at. And I don't think the answer is sitting here with what we currently have.
Counsel Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, perhaps a way to divorce this situation is to repeal 172-2, and take the properties off the historic properties list, the local, leave the commission, and then you've bifurcated the two groups.
You mean 127?
127-2, yes. Which would evaporate the historic designation, which is one of the effects of what's before us here tonight, but doesn't get rid of the commission. Counsel Marone had mentioned that if there was a problem, the commission went away, and there was a problem, that a private citizen could go to planning and zoning to complain. I totally disagree. The state statute, 1-7-147H, I believe, expressly gives that authorization to the commission. It says, "The regulations and orders of the commission issued pursuant to said sections or to any regulation or ordinance adopted under said sections shall be enforced by the zoning enforcement official or building inspector, or by such other person as may be designated by ordinance, who shall be authorized to examine and inspect the building." I'm not aware of any authority for a private person to bring an action absent a commission to the planning and zoning department. So I just, that's my understanding, not that I'm going to sit up here and play a lawyer, but, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? Counsel Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interesting discussion this evening. I think there's a lot of people involved, and a lot of people have their heart in the right place. But I think with the Preservation Trust, if this commission goes away, the Preservation Trust is not going to stop preserving buildings, stop advising people. Years ago, I heard that people, private citizens, have contacted the Historic Properties Commission and asked for advice. And that's a good thing, that's a good thing. But they have also done that with the Preservation Trust. Over the years, Preservation Trust has gotten calls, and I'm going back a number of years, that the Preservation Trust would actually go out to somebody's house and help them with their expertise of what to do with their house, and make some recommendations, and recommend contractors, preservation contractors. So, you know, if the commission is dissolved, things will still go on, and they're still going to go on properly. And I know we talk about that across the street, where Historical Society has been bantered around this evening quite a bit, but, you know, that's another entity that does get town money, matching funds. We've approved that every year for a number of years. And they're not under this purview at all, and they've survived over 90 years. They're in the process now of putting up another building in the back of their, they haven't started construction yet, but it's in the planning stage, and they're going to do that building historically correct. They're not going to put up a cinder block building with aluminum siding on it. So, the preservation in town will happen. It will happen. If this group goes away, it's still going to happen. It was there before this group, it'll be there after this group. And who knows, down the road, the climate might change, where people on North and South Main Street, I don't know, 10 years from now, 50 years from now, 100 years from now, might want a historic district and look at it differently. But the integrity of the town, I've heard that with different people that live on North and South Main Street. And thank you for purchasing houses up there and maintaining houses, you do a great job. But I don't see that being a problem, or how it even fits in with this, with this group, because they have no oversight on any of those properties. These are private property owners that will maintain their own, their own properties. This is two properties. This is two properties. And the third one is a non-entity because there's no building on it any longer. But it could be, it could be, you know, something that the town has to deal with. At the beginning of the evening, at one point, Ms. Brishers had said that, you know, maybe the Historic Properties Commission needs to work with the town a little bit, there's some overgrowth there, and the overgrowth needs to be cut down, or, you know. So, I don't know why they would concern themselves with the, with the overgrowth on the property there. It's reverting back to the way it was before there was any buildings out there. But I just don't see preservation, preservation going away in Wallingford. Wallingford is an old town, it's an old historic town. We preserve our cemetery. Our cemetery is not on this Historic Properties Commission. And look at the work that goes on down there, they restore headstones, they're putting up a building, there, there's always some restoration work going, and it's doing fine. It's doing fine, without any commission, it's doing fine. So, I, I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Letourneau.
Yes.
Marone.
No.
Chortel. Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
No.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes. Motion failed.
Motion fails.
There being no other business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.